It's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please rise for the practice meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and the rest to serve.
Roll call please.
Underwood.
Here.
Gilman.
Here.
Corn, absent and excused. Lehman.
Here.
Heather.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. Does any of the commissioners want to make any amendments to the agenda as presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I move to approve the agenda as presented. Support. Motion by Commissioner Underwood, support by Commissioner Gilman to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Do any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest regarding any items that are on the agenda? Seeing none. Public comment. Do any member of the public wish to make any public comment at this point? Move on to item seven, action items. The first item is a public hearing regarding the 2025 budget. As Chair of the Board of County Road Commissioners of Grand Traverse County, I opened the public hearing for the 2025 budget at six oh one P M. First order would be a staff report on the 2025 budget.
Yeah, so not much has changed from the preliminary. Since then, the county board did approve on four mils, four zero two nine, the assessment, assessment of one mil with the mileage that was approved at the November election. So we'll get those payments in January through March of two thousand twenty five for the next four years. And that amount is estimated to be five million eight hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Total revenue budgeted for twenty five is twenty eight million five hundred forty five thousand one hundred fifty seven dollars. Budgeted expenditures thirty one million fifty three thousand nine hundred ninety two thousand dollars. Leaving an ending fund balance of four million dollars. So the only, I did a little shifting around on some of the labor amounts between the various activities that we do based on a little deeper analysis of what's new sign and signals department, fleet and facilities and then our field jobs. So the overall dollar amount didn't change. It's just showing up in different lines within the expenditures. And then we did take a little deeper dive into the capital outline and recognize that we, we need to put, consider a walkway route for the basement. We, our sign shop currently comes in down there. And there's nothing to prevent the snow from piling down that area.
Over here, if they're down there as well, we can kick looking for moving some temporary ones to move in and out every fall and spring. So we're thinking both staffs walking in and out, it might be a good idea to make that more of a permanent structure.
Similar door replacements, we've been on a plan to replace some of the steel doors with fiberglass doors. So we put about thirty thousand as an estimate in for that. And I bumped up just the miscellaneous by twenty five thousand to seventy five thousand. And then we also wanted to look at the fuel pumps that we have here. The fuel pumps we have actually came from Silver Lake when they built this facility. They're, they're pretty antiquated. They're the old style pumps and we, I noticed we were off on some of the gallons that we're recording versus inventory. Time to find out there's a, you know, some mechanically equipment in there that converts it to a digital in order for our system to be able to track quantities and that kind of thing.
And it's counting on.
It's counting on. So we were gonna try to get maybe look at getting new pumps and they do have high flow diesel pumps, so it pushes out a few more gallons and quite a few more gallons per minute. Because, so we're, it's a struggle. There's not many sources for this. And trying to get quotes, it's pretty challenging, but we're trying to get the update from them. So we just wanted to have a placeholder in here. Something to look at for next year. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Kylie, is there any written communication regarding the 2025 budget? At this point, are there any questions from the public regarding the 2025 proposed budget? Okay, hearing done. I am going to close the hearing. The next item is an appointment with Dave Wessel regarding Lake Road in Union Township. Is Mr. Wessel here?
Okay, here on his behalf.
Okay. If you could come up please and Kylie will read the rules and then you can state your name and begin. Kylie, if you're pleased to read the rules.
Any person made an advanced appointment with the board regarding the road commission topic, it's very regular, respectful meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. If an appointment is made, the topic will be an agenda item. The following applies to public comments. Please state his or her name and address. Topic must be relevant to the road commission. Individuals are allowed to speak once for up to three minutes on a single topic, which may be extended by the chair. A group addressing the board requires a designated spokesperson, which may speak up to ten minutes. And the board will not act on any item from the public that is not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you could please state your name and address and you have ten minutes.
Okay, so Donat Wessel. Right now it's five six nine six Supply Road, Traverse City.
Okay.
And I am trying to, we purchased forty acres on the southeast corner of Five Foot Road in Cedar Creek from the Michigan V N R in August of twenty two. The state of Michigan never granted a easement onto the property for the section of Lake Road as supported by the auction listing. And then, three months ago, my husband had met with Derek and the surveyor from the Grand Traverse Road, Road Commission on the site and discussed options for the road to enter the forty acres. And the survey confirmed that there was no record of the easement granting to the Grand Rapids. Or I'm sorry, Grand Rapids, the G T C R. And then early November, David met with Derek and Dan on a Zoom to further discuss about abandoning the road, entering the property and possibly improving the section of the road that we recommended to the board for approval. In November, the Union Township meeting was unanimously agreed to support abandoning the road on Lake Road. And that would be from two, three, or I'm sorry, five, two, three, eight Lake Road north of Cedar Creek Road. And then I do have a petition with everybody on Lake Road, Hager Road to support. Everybody signature that they're, we're okay with that. That I have that.
And we, you can submit that to the road manager at the, after your presentation is done or to the engineer. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I, I note that the Union Township Supervisor is here, Mr. Mansfield, if you would like to make a comment.
Hey everyone, Doug Mansfield, Union Township Supervisor, four more years, so it'll make it, it's thirty years right now I've been supervisor down there. Just a couple more than we've been married as we discussed earlier. Yeah. But anyhow, long time. Union Township, if you're not aware, it's out of the thirty six mile square township. We're about thirty square miles of state publicly owned. Okay, we consider ourselves the backyard, the playground for the county. And this, we're working to save, consolidate these lands, are getting rid of some extraneous lands that are harder to manage. This piece happens to be one, if you're a trail rider or a snowmobile rider, you know this section of road. Because if the section line road, which we have all over the place, goes up a steep hill, for whatever reason, through the year, people, through the years, people just went off around this steep hill. The management went that way, the improvement went that way onto their property. Okay? So the gist of it was, yes, this should not be on your property. There's no legal descriptions of the survey reports. However, the road commission was semi reluctant to abandon the road in, in its whole value. If we're gonna have this area for public land, Union Township supports making it as remote as possible. Since the A T Vs, the popularity that they get out of these roads, especially since COVID has taken place, are straight section line roads, north and south, to become nothing but six mile racecourses, drag courses down there. And if fifty five, sixty miles an hour, it's, it's, there's no homes out there and I support, or the township through unanimous consent, supports consolidating those, cutting those roads up so that it just don't flow through the township as much and creating this Central Park atmosphere where we truly have a remote wild. There's just no reason to, to pay the money to support plowing these things, to maintain them when there's nobody out there. And they're just getting ripped up week after week, week, weekend after weekend, especially by all the people coming out and using it for basically a township wide motor truck. So to get back to the, the quiet relationship we want to have with the, the nature, natural resources out there, we would support closing as many roads as possible, frankly. Out in that area. This isn't about getting to work faster or safer. It's just about recreation. And I don't think that's what the road commission or these roads are about. So we support not only removing the road off of their land, it shouldn't be there, but not having the road commission have to, have to replace that road and abandon that right away. So we're baking the road at least to improve inside. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mansfield. Thanks. Do you have a question, Commissioner Gilman?
Oh, I, I guess, I would, I would be interested in knowing where our staff is on this and thoughts that you might have.
So you're correcting them wrong, but on the fifties, they look like there was some sort of handshake deal that the V N R has written down. So if we were able to find our kind of piece of paper down on our record stand upstairs. Basically, I hand your own piece on, but they, they moved it over. It's happening, it makes sense. So anytime that road has been, hasn't been contested for over ten years, it becomes right by you, their highway, highway by user. So at that point, you know, we weren't sure what the right course was. We thought we probably should come with the board to have a conversation before we ban the road.
Are we, are we spending any resources rehabilitating these roads at all in any way? Are we maintaining them in any way, shape or form?
We do create it. I believe we are plowing it in the winter right now.
We are plowing it. And what do we get per mile under the, the Act fifty one formula roughly?
For a local road, about three dollars a mile.
Okay. And how much? How much is this in terms of distance?
Or it's like a quarter mile.
It's a quarter mile. So we're talking about seven hundred and fifty dollars that we get for having it. The township doesn't care. I mean, they'd prefer that it was okay. And if it reduces our, our exposure for the seven hundred and fifty dollars that we get each year, I'm done with that. I mean, honestly, if the township agrees, the property owners agree, there's nobody really who's, who's arguing against it.
If, if we plow it, is there enough space for a turnaround? If we, if we did do this, then, so correct me if you're saying not to move on the section road, just abandon the whole thing altogether, that would turn into more of a grid pattern. I'd have to look when we come down on the other road, if there's a, there's a turnaround spot there.
But there, there's been at least a practical turnaround for years at the end of a property that it serviced, you know, so. And also I should have noted that this isn't part of our big snowmobile network or anything out there either.
I, I figured that because I know you kind of rely on that a little bit too, right? The other thing, you know, obviously we'd have to go through the, the hearing process to do this again.
Well, not necessarily. If she, if Mrs. Wessel indicated that she has the signatures of all the adjoining property owners, then a public hearing is not necessary. Is that accurate? You, I believe you indicated you have
Yep.
all the adjoining and so
I did, from Lake Road, yes.
Okay, so typically what will happen is you will submit the petition to our staff. Our staff will view it and ensure that it is signed by all the adjoining property.
And they understand we will not be maintaining that road any further.
Correct. There's the, the area that would be on our property, there's nothing, there's no homes or anything on that. It's the end of Cedar Creek Road is room to turn around. And then Lake Road that comes to that property is also would be turning. You could, there's the plow trucks would be to be able to turn it on there too.
So my understanding is that the portion of Lake Road that you're asking to be abandoned, isn't it entirely on the law property?
Yes, it is.
So there will be only one property, correct?
That would, that would be us, yes.
That will be signing the petition.
Well, we had everybody from Lake Road that is in that section from Hager to the end of Lake Road. We happened to get more signatures than that.
Okay.
We got all of Cedar Creek Road too.
Okay, so you got the signatures of the property owners that, that are on that, what I would call the unopened section of Lake Road?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because
Are you gonna, are you heading back to where you were there?
Yeah. I'm around here. I tried, tried, but I like from, but there it's in fact, like I've been spinning that one. All right, swap here.
You go right there.
Yeah.
There's that curve. Or is that
Are those two houses?
That's the one, right? So, and so I guess my question, if you can zoom in there a little. Yeah, I don't know the
Yes, the, the people from the burglies on both sides of the road from the curve to Hager Road. And then all of Cedar Creek Road.
Okay, so you got it on both ends.
Cedar Creek, yeah.
Got it. Okay, that's all I needed to.
I think we just have to make sure we have a turnaround, what you said there. At the end.
Okay. So just to explain the process, they will review if, they will ensure that all the property owners have signed it. If that is then confirmed that then we don't, under the statute, we don't require a public hearing. So at that time, it will come before the board and results. Uh, we're gonna make sure it's around the turn. Well, that will be determined by the staff. Yeah, that will, the staff will have to figure out if there's a way to, you know, that's yeah. What is that? Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I can't, you can't see the hill.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's
Yeah. Doug. Can I have your readers? You have one more leisure line than you do that I just got.
Great night.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're sloppy.
Everything's
We had the last person come in meeting this time, it was fifteen. Okay, got here. Thank you.
It were publicly known, we might want to up speak.
Thank you.
I want to add those as well. Turnaround is more of a grid, plows and more of a grid there.
The board can certainly at its discretion hold the public hearings and we can decide that when, once the petition is reviewed. Okay. Whether, whether that is the direction the board wishes to go. Okay. All right, we will move on to seven B, discussion of the twenty twenty five draft budget. And this is our staff requesting comment and direct them to finalize the twenty twenty five budget. Just so the board knows, my thought is that we could, if we could have a discussion at today's meeting and provide any direction to staff or comments to staff regarding towards finalizing the budget, then hopefully at our December twelfth meeting, we could then approve the twenty twenty five budget. So I'll open it up for any discussion or comments from the commissioners. Well, I'll start with Commissioner Underwood. I don't have any options out of mind. Best everything you need to discuss already. Okay. Commissioner Gilman?
Well, it gets us back to the the projects that are coming. Did we in the general budgeting of the projects, did we adjust at all for their, for our discussion about town line and, okay.
Yeah, we push that over to doing the overlay and then funding the project.
Awesome, awesome, good. More, more is better.
Where does that reflect there?
Yeah, I, I, he didn't, he doesn't
I didn't reflect any of the
Okay.
Because those will still have to be dead.
He has some of the, the partnership and federal aid project.
Yes, those are identified with those other funding sources.
Now, the intersection improvement projects, I mean, are we, are we getting them special aid for that? For, for example, for the Keystone at Burmley?
Those are not
Okay, so, so that's money out of our, okay. Could we consider possibly something different at that intersection? I mean, I, I recall we turned it to a blinking light for a period of time at certain times.
Which intersection?
That's the Keystone at Burmley.
Oh.
On Keystone, just before the Will Cocker fields and whatnot. I just it just seems like kind of a pain in the butt, intersection, given that we have Hammond and everything there. Anyhow, just kind of random thoughts. No, it's in the budget and that's fine and we can
Well, we're, we can have H R C is still getting designed in that.
Yeah.
So we don't even have updated engineer estimates at this time.
I'm good with everything else.
Okay, thank you. Lehman?
Um, I thought we, when we spoke the other, two weeks ago, we were talking about these signals being eligible for perhaps three hundred thousand dollars. The pulling these signals forward, the extra one was because we were gonna get some federal aid on that. That was not gonna come out of the budget.
The, the
Oh, the
If you look under the federal
Okay.
High risk, yeah.
How do we say?
Okay. That's the, that's the one. But the other ones are complete, were completely on our own.
Yeah. I believe the Northland Lake it hurt, it was an eighty twenty grand.
So that leaves us paying about a hundred on it.
That was the engineering.
Is that is that the same project where, where TCAP is collaborating with respect to redoing the internal driveway? I think daily is nodding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I have, I've reviewed it. I don't have any questions. I think all my questions have been answered at the previous meeting, so. Um.
And all the general appropriations act ready for next meeting?
Yes, thank you. All right. Moving on to item seven C, consent calendar, Kylie?
Consent calendar is used to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together without discussion. Requests by any person present to remove any item from the consent calendar for full discussion as an agenda item are automatically respected. The action noted in parentheses for all items remaining on the consent calendar are approved by a single condition action adopting the consent calendar. The manager recommends the following items be adapted. One minute, two payroll, three accounts payable, four financial reports, and five communications.
Thank you. Uh, does any member of the board wish to remove any item from the consent calendar? Yes. The L, item L, is that included in the item, yeah, seven L, is that included in the amount of two million four fifty six? Um, I think there was a payment that we did. Was there?
For the That was a notification.
Not for much. Not for long.
That's on for L? It sounds like one like Westlake?
No, we did pay the three hundred, but there was another payment that
Oh, yeah, but not for that.
I see. Did, that was, would be under the the payment selection. Okay, so on page twenty one is on the invoice, the day amounts and
There was a hundred and eighty two thousand.
Hundred and eighty two.
I, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, and there was a comment in the comments. Does any member from the public wish to remove any item from the consent calendar? Okay, roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve that consent.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Underwood, support by Commissioner Gilman to approve the consent calendar. Roll call please.
Gilman?
Yes.
Uh, Corn, absent and excused. Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
And Heather.
Yes. Okay. So we move on to item E, which is reports. Any items from the staff report that any commissioner wish to discuss? I had a question. Actually, it has nothing to do with the staff reported. Actually, I apologize. I should have brought this up. Going back to the payment selection register, there's an entry here under vendor Terry Berry.
It was the pens.
I'm sorry, it is a what?
Like pens.
Pins, okay, got it, okay.
Employee.
All right.
Years of service.
Yeah, and years of service, Ben, thank you.
Any questions? I, I did want to make, make a, make a comment. I, it says that in the staff report that staff did an interview with Up North Live to discuss a new law regarding staying back two hundred feet. I think that's very important considering that we're gonna have for the snow season start soon. Have, have we put up that interview on our Facebook page or on all the other pages? I think it's probably a good idea to periodically keep reposting it so that people, but it is a new law and people may not be aware of it that uh, that they have to follow it. What's the penalties that, is, is it like a fine or is it a misdemeanor? Does anyone know what that is?
You know, that's a good question. I never looked into that part.
Yeah, it might be, might Yeah, it might be a good idea to look into it because, you know, I don't know if it's like something that's enforced by the, I'm assuming it would be enforced by the sheriff's department or a law enforcement agency. It wouldn't be us.
If you believe I heard that there was some sort of accent within that range that we would not be able to.
Yeah, good, it's a, it's probably a good idea to see what, what the penalties are and maybe include that in there so that people are aware that, you know, that that is something that is needed for this where I think the other thing I liked about this report is, are the, there's pictures about us getting the pot hill coal repairs in the village of Fife Lake and what, what, what road is that?
Oh, we pretty much gritted the whole village.
Really?
Yeah, we didn't do any like the huge areas or the edge breaks, but we tried to hit any of the potholes within the village.
Yeah, that that's uh. That looks like a lot of potholes on that road, so I thought that was a nice time. Okay, so it is a civil infraction, okay. All right, any other any questions from the staff report, okay? Item F, uh commissioner updates on any meeting in the last month, Commissioner Lehman.
Yeah, well, both Commissioner Goodman and I attended the Paul Bunyan. And they had the usual, there was a little less, there there wasn't any talk this time, the updates on their plan for the mileage. It was still in the in the priorities booklet. And 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 nobody in our council made, didn't make anything to to. Make any movement away from that, but that was, that was the most. Some some talk about um. We're just talking about it a few, a little, a few minutes ago, uh. I don't know what your brain rates right now. We talked about it for about an hour, the the uh.
And Carl's stuff?
Not Carl, um. Bert, Bert was talking, uh Bert was going on about it, but anyway.
Caps?
Both ORVs and, yeah, 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 it was, it was the road, right, right, right. Thanks, that's right, you were there.
So ORV was the focus, and the conflicts between the the.
And and.
Conflict are between the user groups more, a little bit more right now than with the, than with.
But whether or not we 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 allow. Travel to and from some of these trails, I mean, there are roads and. And whatnot, it was, it was an interesting discussion. There's a big discussion about how they're putting wire in the roads, but they're not paying for licenses and different things like that, so they're not putting any. Funding back into the gravel roads and stuff like that, so there are a few people there, if they're a little. They're a little leaning a little towards an additional license fee, you know, which course they have their ORV, they have their their uh. Uh. Trail, their trail permit, and then now they have to have their.
Yeah, they they were talking about the 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 rev, there is revenue being generated. But it doesn't go to the road, it doesn't come to the road commissions for any sort of maintenance on these.
Right.
Roads, trails from the you, from these alternate user groups.
D N R has it.
The D N R gets them on everything, and they don't share with us much. So.
I think that's something that's gonna amp it up eventually, again, yeah.
Excellent.
That was like trail to trail, but then there might be a half mile of road you have to do to get to there and they're using that, so it doesn't need a. Section.
And yet, meetings.
Sure, stuff, cool stuff, I mean, it was. Just saying all. We didn't exactly rise to the top on the uh. On the insurance pool uh award, I think they gave us an honorable mention pretty much. About work on that probably.
Yeah, we have been working on that, we've invited them in a few times, our term mod rate is definitely high. Uh, we had about a four year stretch there, where it curved up, we are starting to trend down, but unfortunately, the way the drops off. On on the rotation, it's gonna be a couple of years before we're back in fifteen.
What is that, what mod rate, what what is that?
For the first.
First.
Okay. They basically will rate you uh. This higher or lower uh in the premiums based on your the risk. So if you're at low risk, you're gonna have a lower mod, like under one.
Is that based upon number of places, accidents, injuries?
Average it over, I think, three year period, so as time moves on, some of those will fall off and. So, very busy, very calculating the mods every.
Some cars have a big discount and they. We're we're paying the standard rate plus. So.
Okay. Mr. Underwood.
Well, we had a couple of great meetings, it's, well, I'm really, Dan talked about Fight League Township. Dan and I read a meeting in Fight League Township over the last week, um. We got the village agreement here that's coming up on M M, they're very. Thankful, appreciative that we're willing to work with them because they. They're too small to be able to do it themselves, they need a little help. Getting good pricing, I guess is a good way to say. They're very, very thankful that we were helping them do that, um. At a meeting with D T E that I gave to Dan, I don't know if we're gonna talk about that tonight or not, but let's just talk about that if you do.
I was gonna say, it's probably worth mentioning and.
I see D T E is here. Just like, which we'll let Dan talk about a little bit later on what might be going on there, so. Other than that, it's just. Start to be the end of the year. Enjoyed our. Township Association. Annual event.
Yeah, it was a nice event.
With our partners.
I um, we had a meeting with uh the M doc and um. Green Lake and Blair Township Supervisor and and Fire uh Chiefs regarding the Interlocken project and. The purpose of that meeting was. To make sure that everyone was on the same page and to answer any uh. Questions that the townships may have had, may have from M doc regarding the project, how the road closures would work and. The detours would work and uh, and so it was a very good discussion at the, uh I think, all the participants of the meeting appreciated the fact that. They had a chance to have this meeting before the project started so that. They can go back to their townships and the and the emergency and law enforcement personnel could know. Or beforehand. How to plan around the detours and the construction once it begins, so. Uh, that was a very positive meeting and one of the asks that the uh M doc folks had was. That if in the future, if we had any projects which would result in detours on their roads, that we would have. A similar meeting to kind of make them aware of it so that there is open communication, so. Uh, I think it's a good model to follow on future projects that are large scale construction projects for that, everyone is aware of them and we can uh. We can discuss any issues that anyone perceives uh coming up uh once the road closures. Start, one of the items that they discussed, for example, was. The placement of a traffic light at the Uker Road intersection uh and uh. That's.
Is that gonna be Uker?
That's Carlin though.
Carlin, yeah, 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 and there was, I think, one was.
I would have made a deal with with Tom's and and the people that owned that mall, you know, I mean, we're carrying out loud.
And then Supervisor Blanchard uh was very supportive, uh was uh of having that traffic because they're gonna put a temporary light there and. The township uh really wants a permanent light there, so there was a lot of sadness at Uker and Carlin, so. Cause of the number of uh serious accidents that have.
Right, I get it.
So we, that is something that we have, we have made clear to them that we would have to have an internal discussion with our staff and engineers to make sure whether, because. The issue with that is once the project is over, all the liability shifts to us, and so we would have to have a. Review internally to make sure that that is something we are willing to uh do or take on, so, but. It was a very good meeting.
Is the temporary signal they put up, is that of lasting quality?
Uh, yeah, I think it's on wood, wood poles, yeah.
But yes, it could be a lasting.
Yeah.
It could be a.
It was simply leaving up there, but obviously. We have to make sure that that is something, and I believe that. There has to be uh uh some, there needs to be some work done before we are in a position to make a decision on that, so. All right. Item G. Commissioners discussions, I believe we, unless there's something else that.
Well, and the only thing is, I guess, for me, it's uh, it's just getting, I wanna touch on the Uker Carlin discussion. To kind of. Get ahead a little bit. Uh. I'm not, I would be a fan of putting a light there, I don't think we need to expand our light network out that way necessarily. Uh. But I'm not adverse to improving the intersection. To make it flow better, and I think there are ways to make that work. Uh. Similarly, I think we still need to work on old road. And not put a stop or another circle in. But perhaps add. An exit lane that goes to the right that gets people, you know, into the slingshot perhaps of coming back, that would be, I think, helpful. Uh, because it is close enough to CAS and it doesn't take anybody out of it too much. And and or uh, you know, and or either or uh. Expanding a lane over as far as the pass through lane, stay right and a lot of the traffic to money. Potentially uh heading towards.
Ground, but could we do a right turn only on there?
I, you know, I mean, I was.
Not pro prohibit left turns?
I don't, I don't think that's such a bad idea. And if we do that, though, I think it's, it'd be important that we do add that extra lane to get people out and moving.
Sure.
And and uh, and that, that I think would.
You're talking about a longer merge lane.
Yeah, 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 a longer merge lane.
Simon's effect, but that house is for sale.
We don't need to take a house out there, I don't have the space, we need to put lane. But if we were making a lane on that side, I mean.
Rural tracks might be a real issue there if you.
Yeah. And I said, you're gonna have, well, the house is like three ninety seven right? I I I know, I've actually shown the. And there's a lot of property there, but we don't need that.
How much traffic is on a whole road a lot?
Yeah, they get.
We have, do we have a?
We do, I can't think off the top of my head what the numbers. There's, there are always curves, always.
Quite a, quite a.
Quite high. So, so if we did, let's hypothetically speaking, if we did do a right turn only, would you? Recommend that there be two right turn lanes in order to make.
I don't know how you do that with the tracks, or you do awful close, cause you have that extra lane on that side next to those tracks, might be tough to squeeze in there. I don't know if I'd recommend that.
All right.
Uh, that's it, oh, 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 the only other thing I wanted to ask was. Uh, on the progress of fixing some things and some things. How, how is the uh, how is the building coming?
The building itself's coming along really good, okay, I'm pretty happy with it.
Good.
Still having some asphalt issues, still having ongoing meetings, um. Still holding back probably half the pay for the asphalt project.
But they're diligently working to to make things work right.
Yeah, unfortunately, the the plans have shut down now, so it's gonna be some sort of agreement to fix in the spring, probably, we'll, we can get through until spring.
We can manage, okay.
Any other? Discussion? Okay, we move on to item H, traffic signal discussion, this was a request from Commissioners Lehman and Gilman. For our. Signal. Person. To provide extraordinary. Uh, to provide a. PowerPoint presentation regarding traffic signals, so.
Hello. Can I also, Rachel, thank you, yeah. All right, so I had requested some questions, uh, one of the questions we got was how do you best respond to traffic conditions? Um, and a few ways we do that is the mode of control of the traffic signal and the field configuration. Um, also the ever going topic of South Airport in Garfield. Um. So when we talk about modes of traffic signal control, there are really like five key ones. You have free operation, straight time, coordinated time. Uh, responsive and adaptive systems. When you operate a traffic signal in free. Um, you're using the actuation, uh, which is usually in the form of stop bar and pedestrian detection. To either semi actuate or fully actuate the intersection, meaning that it kind of operates on demand. Um, one of the best features of free is the ability to use passage time, which allows it to stretch that minimum green. Out to the maximum, however, if there's no one there, it can gap out and move on to the next. Phase, um, this type of operation is really good in solo intersections and non coordinated areas. Uh, we use this quite a bit on our west side. And some of these ones are like Hammond because of their distances. Uh, next is straight time, straight time is probably the simplest. Um. With the engineered times, there's no detection, no activation, it runs exactly that time. If you say it's gonna run fifteen seconds, it's gonna run fifteen seconds, it's gonna go to its. Um, scheduled yellow and red and then move right to the next phase. Um, so it's very simple. No room for movement on that. So then the kind of mid ground is coordination, coordination is when we start talking about synchronizing multiple intersections. Um, that allows uh the operation to move one or more direction at a time, working together. Uh, these times are pre programmed. Um, to coordinate between signals in a corridor. Um, and each signal then has to share the same signal length. Um, so I like to try to decide, describe coordination as a bag of marbles. If you have eighty marbles at each intersection, you only have eighty marbles. If I decide that a left turn move is too heavy, I don't get to add extra marbles, I have to take them from one of the other. Uh, movements to keep that eighty marbles. Uh, Rachel, if you could go to the next one.
So the cycles have to be identical in time overall, however, they could be different.
Yes.
In the turn and straight.
And this, this graphic right here explains why, because that cycle length needs to be the same so that the intersections can stay in step.
And 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 same, right?
Yep, so as long as they can stay in step, if you start adding time, like if I would have taken it and now we've got, you know, three intersections with eighty, but one's got eighty three. Well, it's always gonna be off because it can't.
Right.
Stay in step, so that's coordination. Um, the next step would be a responsive system, our responsive systems are. They are very heavy on their detection and communication, um, they have a little bit of a delayed response though because. Uh, what it does is it takes several cycles to gather information and then pre program, uh picks pre programmed. Like going to a cafeteria and deciding which timing plans it wants to use for that responsive. Um. And then the last type of control. Is the adaptive system. Um, the adaptive systems use patterns and parameters for each phase and cycles, and they're evaluated throughout an algorithm. Those splits and cycles are then adjusted in real time, so it's not like the responsive were, wait. It says, hey, wait a minute, we need to do something now, and so it starts to adjust in real time to meet that demand. So what mode of control is best? Uh, obviously, not every intersection is gonna be served best by each mode of control, so there is no one size fits all answer. Each intersection system and corridor needs to be evaluated independently for your desired outcome. Whether you're trying to move a platoon while you're trying to get one intersection to optimize itself. Um, each one of those things then comes from what control mode is best, best. And then traffic signals aren't perfect. Um, but with sound engineering analysis and operational assist, knowledge assist. Uh, and serving the public to the best of our capacity within our own known limitations. Um, one of the benefits we have here is we have a fantastic traffic engineer and um, when I run into issues, I can always get some help. Um, he helps with some of the timing counts, things like that, so. Much appreciated having a traffic engineer and staff, definitely helps with this kind of work. And then some of the other ways that we do this is the field configuration, um, so we've talked a lot about left turns, you know, you've got the protective permissive left turn. So you can have leads or lags. Um, I've kind of tried to denote them there by the green and then the flashing yellow. Uh, one of the biggest benefits we've seen having that lagging left is the ability for both those times to adjust as needed. Um. Which also allows more flexibility for the whole intersection, because if there is no one sitting there and they got to all go on that flashing yellow. Uh, we don't even have to service the green. The other advantage is if you're in that intersection there on the right. And uh, you have a lagging left, if you're in the intersection trying to make that left, now you get a green to clear instead of getting trapped in the middle. Um, like a lead typically does. And then South Airport and Garfield, um, obviously, South Airport and Garfield is two of our major roads coming together. So one of the things we talk about a lot, Derek, myself, when we're looking at timing, is the traffic splits. And the splits are how you describe. How a road gets its time. So at South Airport and Garfield, the traffic splits are almost fifty fifty. For Garfield and Hammond. Or, sorry, Garfield and South Airport, if you're to look at other intersections on the South Airport corridor, for example, Barlow Freon or Dunk here at the bottom of the hill. It's about sixty six percent to thirty three percent. Um, and if you look at South Airport Park, it's like seventy five percent on South Airport, twenty five percent on Park. So the disparity is far greater. When you get onto the other intersections, it just happens that our two major roads converge there at Garfield and South Airport. So what are other options? Well, if you add green time. So what are other options? Well, if you add green time, you're adding red time to the other movements. Um, in addition, if you add more marbles, now we're no longer compatible with the corridor system. Um, then the next option is to add blacktop. You add more lanes, whether it's a dual left or whatever, but again, that's now moving utilities and real estate purchases. So what has changed at Garfield and South Airport in the last couple of years? So I've included some of our, um, timing, uh, from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. Um, the phases have changed minimally. I think the max is seven seconds that it changed. Um, the lefts went from leading to lagging. We did add a safety feature called Red Protect, um, which was added in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we did change the mode of operation three different times. In twenty eighteen, it was running in free. In twenty twenty-two, we were running a coordinated pattern, and then in twenty twenty-four, we switched to the system free adaptive. And then due to the coordination, in twenty twenty-two, the cycle lengths were a hundred seconds, and now they range from a hundred and twelve to a hundred and seventy-six seconds. So those changes were all made to prioritize the flow along the entirety of the South Airport corridor. And by doing that, we had to make sure that each intersection now plays along versus only optimizing themselves individually. So the other thing, when I got started talking about this with Dan, because I just can't stop talking about traffic signals, uh, Dan asked if I would kind of talk a little bit about some of the costs associated with different pieces of traffic signals. Uh, so the great debate of mass arms versus strain pulls. Uh, so what I have done here is with the help of Derek, he showed me where the M dot unit pricing is. And as of, uh, two weeks ago, the average forty-five foot, uh, mass arm and pole is about thirty-one thousand five hundred bucks a piece. And that is not including the foundations. Uh, the strained pole, when you add in the pole, the spanware and the tether, it's about eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars a piece. Then if I multiply that out to having four per intersection, we're gonna difference of about fifty-one thousand two hundred dollars. And as I mentioned, on neither of these did I include foundations. However, that, uh, average pricing indicated that the mass arms being that they have to be larger foundations are gonna cost more. Um, then the next.
Hey, great move on.
Yes.
Can you, can you talk, that that was from the M dot book, can you tell us about what we've been paying compared to what you think the average prices are?
We're paying M dot unit prices. All of our stuff, our bids are M dot bids. So.
Spanware looks pretty.
It's how the construction bidding is done.
Well, that's, but that's, this is the average of all the things in this, the state. If we put somebody off for bid, we don't necessarily get.
No.
I remember the foals off the top of my head, but the spanware and tethers are pretty close. Actually, I think we're cheaper than those average prices.
On both, do you think?
On the tethers and the spanware.
I was just trying to get an idea in the state of what we're looking at. And so then kind of the next thing to think about is kind of like those other incurred costs. Obviously, with a span pole, you're probably gonna have to rewire it at least once in its lifetime. Um, sometimes, depending on what the intersection is doing, I have thrown the number at twenty-two thousand ish. Because of twenty twenty-three, we did a, um, safety grant application. And to get the backplates, brand new signals, brand new conductors, um, for each intersection was approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then with both steel strains and of mass arms, uh, there are steel inspections. With a steel strain pole, it's every five years. And with a mass arm, it's every three years. Um, last time we did it was twenty twenty-two, and it was about five hundred and forty dollars per structure. Um, and obviously, I kind of put a caveat on there. Obviously, if we have things that are in worse condition, they're gonna get tested more frequently. Um, but when they're still new, they test pretty well for us. Next, please. And then, uh, pedestrian facilities. So why are we installing pedestrian facilities during modernizations? Uh, the biggest reason we're installing them is if they were currently there. Um, once you have pedestrian facilities, it's very hard, uh, to get away from them. Um, so I pulled out a good chunk of the, uh, modernizations we've done there. And if they had them, they got them again, and if they didn't, they didn't. The only one we've done differently was Hammond and Garfield. Um, and that was a little bit of engineering judgment based on the fact that paths were already coming in to the intersection, and we wanted to make them match that once they got there. Um, but it's a lot simpler for us when we're modernizing and putting all the new equipment in um, versus trying to retrofit under those new pro-wag and ADA requirements. And then, uh, does scoot, does a scoot intersection cost more than a non-scoot intersection? Uh, scoot's only a mode of operation. It doesn't affect the cost of construction. Um, so if you took an intersection that's gonna be running scoot and an intersection that's not, the cost of the physical construction is not gonna cost any more to build a scoot intersection than that, because that little black box in the middle is the Gemini, and that's what controls the scoot, and all we do is salvage it out of the old intersection and put it into the new one. So the rest of the equipment's all the same, whether it's scoot control or not.
At this point, is the scoop helping us?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
I think the biggest place that I noticed it is when I drive through Logan's Landing. And I think about how you speak back all the way up, solid traffic. Now, when you pull up there, I can usually get pretty close to CAS.
The other advantage that too is, um, it used to be, what they call it, an accordion style, or you're stop and go, stop and go, stop and go, and we don't do that rubber band thing anymore.
Well, my main concern, I don't have a problem at CAS. CAS CAS and South Airport almost always flows well. A- at this point, in the past, at this point, I've never, I've never had a problem at CAS. I just don't have. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm. At Park, I think the, uh, the traffic on Park gets a little too much weight. Um, you know, if if we're seventy-five percent, you know, uh, on South Airport at Park, they should definitely be seventy-five or eighty percent of the, uh, of the flow through there. Uh, I've, I've been disappointed at a few points getting stopped at that every time. So it's, and then it just doesn't seem like that's right. Don't seem to have too much trouble, and I mean, there are specific intersections that I think are problematic. Maybe, maybe we need to, you know, uh, tweak some of the timing, uh, for each.
No, I don't think we do. So at Park, there's a very large disparity in that cross street and Main Street. The issue is, remember, we have to keep that coordination, so we have to have certain cycle lengths to keep it so that we're not sending traffic in a place that can't go. So some of the intersections will hold a green a little bit longer to make sure it stays in step to move to that next state. So on a side street like Barlow, you're gonna have more traffic. Park is gonna have less, but we still have to have South Airport about the same so that we can still progress it.
Okay.
So it will have to hold a side street, and you'll notice it more on the ones that may have just a little bit less traffic. As you notice, Garfield had fifty fifty. We were at about sixty-six thirty-three, and we're at seventy-five twenty-five. So CAS is gonna bump back up. It's harder to notice when there's traffic all the time. With Park being that disparity, it's got the highest disparity between them all. It's gonna hold a little bit longer on the side street, just to make sure that it can step back into step.
Okay. And as far as Garfield is concerned, it's, it's maddening when you're, when you're heading south and you see a left turn light that eighteen cars could pass through. And and I'm not really exaggerating, and it stays green, and there's nobody there turning. Now. Or if you're coming north and and you're waiting because of that. Um, yeah, I I guess for me, it's kind of like, sometimes maybe we just need to sit there and watch that thing for a couple of hours.
And I do. That's literally my job.
Okay. Because that is, that is, uh.
So now, the Garfield and South Airport that you used to know and love ran in free. However, it did not play well with the rest of the system.
And that's the problem.
And that is why we had to change it.
My, uh, my questions were more about, there there are some, you you spoke a little bit about lagging laps, and I told you last time how much I like the lagging lap. The Grand Charmer's Mall and the Grand Charmer's Crossing doesn't seem to ever go lagging left.
It is not a lagging left because it is not a protected permissive. It is a protected only. And this is more of an engineering question, but typically, if it is a protected only movement, that goes first.
Well, it's terrible.
But there's no sight distance on the one side. We can't put a protected permissive. It has to be protected only.
I I I don't understand what you're saying. All I know.
On South Airport.
I I'm already backed up way around the corner. I'm not coming around the corner, because I'm stopped with the rest of the traffic west of all these. And up ahead, the light proceeds to go left at that intersection.
Hmm.
And then finally, the rest of us who are going through move.
Yes. That's a protected only left. So they go first. There is no permissive movement. There are no flashing yellows there. So it runs just like a standard through section. The left turn movements go first and then the through movements.
And and your, and the reason being of related to sight distance, what?
Typically on the southbound, with the way that that curve comes around, you can't do a flashing yellow because people wouldn't have the time to determine what that car is coming around.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's it.
Yep.
No.
One question I did have, Haley, we talked about the head.
Yes.
Once again, what's the head cost of that?
Look which buttons themselves. I think it's, it's cost about eighty bucks a piece. I don't know what the installation is. We, we did an eight intersection project a couple of years back for, I think, sixty grand.
Yeah.
So there's not a huge, but the important part, though, is, so, uh, pedestrian detection. I- if we put a pedestrian signal out, we will put a button. Because if you don't, the pedestrian timing then runs the intersection. So the way that pedestrians are hierarchy with vehicles is the pedestrians are, have higher hierarchy. So if the intersection does not have buttons, if you have a seven second walk and a fifteen second don't walk, every single time you're gonna get that. Well, if Phil pulls up and he's the only car there.
Yeah.
And he's waiting, he's now waiting for the countdown because it has to serve it all the time. So what we have done is we've been adding pads, um, to some locations where it retroactively to make sure that the pads aren't running the intersection. Um, in addition to kind of making it an internal policy of if we are putting a pedestrian signal up, there will be a button associated with it to make sure that we can create a better running intersection.
Any other questions for Haley?
I I appreciate you putting up with our, uh, our questions and and frankly, for your candor. Look, I I still don't get it. We're all stopped on South Airport Road. The traffic has finally cleared from the mall and the crossings. Why do the lefts have to go first? I.
It's, it's just a traffic engineering principle.
All protected only is go.
It's the same way as Silver Lake and Fourteenth Street. Those are both protected only and they go at the same time. Silver Lake and South Airport, the double left, the protected goes first. South Airport and CAS, the protected's go first. That's just a typical traffic engineering principle is to send a protected left first.
Would you rather want to through traffic to go first and then left to go second?
And lagging, lag the left.
Lagging lefts can only happen with a protected permissive.
Yeah.
Those are not protected permissive. They are only protected. If you look at the signal head, there's only three arrows. A protected permissive has four.
And we can't have a protective permissive based upon your earlier comment because of sight distance.
Correct, and that's more of an engineering thing.
Which is the ability for the driver to react.
Correct, because if you had a protected permissive and someone starts to go, and someone's coming booking six or five down South Airport, you can't, the way that intersection is configured. But it's just a typical engineering principle to have a protected only left go first, then Bruce. And due to the fact that they do not overlap, there's no benefit to having it go first or second. It's just typical engineering practice to have it go first.
Or maybe still stop.
Yeah.
That's how I'm got, that's theirs, isn't it?
All protected lefts are like that, yes.
Shouldn't be a protected left then. Okay, I I've spoken about it, can't, it's a horrible intersection. I get stopped on South Airport Road every time, and South Airport Road is our main corridor, and all the cars, cars on South Airport are still sitting. Except the lefts. We have three lanes full of cars there, and we're four lanes, both directions, and one lane of left in both directions. And sometimes there's nobody in the lefts, and the the, this, all the straight through cars are still sitting back around the corner.
All right. So I, we, I think we, I think Haley has addressed that issue, so I'm not sure if there's any more discussion to be had on that.
Wouldn't be bad to the every, every, every third month or so, you know, come back, give, maybe give us an update, maybe we have some some other things to lay out, uh, concerns, questions or whatnot, but it's kind of fun having you up there and we learn a little bit about our lights.
Yeah, I can assure you that will not be happening.
Yeah, if, 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 if there are any questions for Haley, I I think any, all the, any comment there is welcome to submit them to Haley.
I was gonna say, and the other thing too, is if you have any further questions, feel free to direct them to Dan or Kylie.
Yep.
And then they get them to me.
Yep.
And I have no problem putting the other little email to answer questions or whatever. In the past, I know Alisa did that when Wayne was my boss, and we just put something together and sent it back to her.
That, that's, uh, I think that's the more efficient use of yours. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Haley. All right, item I, protecting local government retirement and benefits pack application for waiver. This is, uh.
Me.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, so this is the annual thing we have to do. We have, um, because we do the hundred and twelve dollars, uh, for the older retirees, uh, for their healthcare savings plan. We don't have an O FAB to pre-fund it, so we trigger underfunded status with the, uh, treasury. Uh, so this is just an application to waive, uh, the underfunding requirement that the state has of forty percent of the lines to be funded. We pay as we go. Uh, it's always been passed in the past. So we just need board approval.
We authorized the manager to execute the application for waiver.
Or.
All right. So we, we are, we are adopting this, uh, actual, actually, we are adopting this resolution, correct?
It's, it's, it's just, I just need to put a copy of the minutes with this, saying the board approved this plan.
Okay, got it. So we have a motion from Commissioner Gilman and support from Commissioner Lehman to approve the application for waiver and authorize the manager to execute the document. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Item J four fifty-seven Plan Amendment.
Just some housekeeping and Dan and myself to our, um, employee four fifty-seven plan.
That's on page eighty-nine of the patent. Anyone needed to look at it.
Uh, move, we approve the four fifty-seven plan amendment presented.
Great, motion by Commissioner Underwood, support by Commissioner Gilman to approve the four fifty-seven Plan Amendment. Can you further discuss? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sugar Lane easement, uh, is that Derek or is that Dan?
Derek.
Okay.
So this is from our survey, Jeff, who's approached by a property owner. I'm not sure pages in your packet, but there's initially drawing.
It's page nine.
Um, the red parcel, um, they're looking to buy, but it has no legal access. I'm not sure how that was able to be dubbed that way, but that's where we're at. It's at the end of Sugar Lane, and easement off the end of Sugar Lane with the cul-de-sac, this was granted back in nineteen. I don't remember the year off the top of my head. But, how was it, since then, two thousand, um, cul-de-sac was not part of the road in two thousand, except when she reported the boardment, December twentieth, two thousand. Cul-de-sac was not part of the road in two thousand, except was reported, the board minutes, December twentieth, two thousand. And December twenty eighth, two thousand, they recorded quite indeed. Um, getting over there, sell the cul-de-sac, Grand Chalmers County official future road development. So we have this. Uh, strip off the end of the cul-de-sac, the future road development.
If we bring that up, is there a way to bring that up?
Is this one of those? It is one of those.
Yeah, so this for the, for, for your everybody's benefit.
You know what I'm talking about.
So that blue, that blue area is the easement that was granted for future road development back in two thousand.
Right.
Since two thousand, we've granted a permit in twenty fourteen. For access along that road or the future road. Um, for one of the adjoining properties. They're wanting to enter an agreement, agreement for, for an easement for that red outline parcel to access that. Piece of easement for, set for future road well.
So Derek, just for. For clarification purposes, my understanding based upon the memo that's in the packet is that the. Area south of the cul-de-sac, that Sugar. Row lane. That is actually our property because it was deeded over to us. So we own the land underneath it.
Yeah, it's up for future road development.
Yeah, so it's not like we have a, just like a public right of way easement. We actually own the land be- below that road, so. Just for the, uh, uh, board's benefit. That is why they are asking for an easement from us is because we own the land underneath it, even though it is for road purposes. They needed easement over it to access there.
Uh, so they're not asking for a road.
Right.
So we, we still have the road itself.
They just want the access to the cul-de-sac.
To the cul-de-sac. Got it, okay.
South of the cul-de-sac.
So we still maintain to the cul-de-sac and all that. They just want an easement so they can access, basically a driveway. They want a driveway.
It's a two-track, I think.
Yeah, well, whatever's, yeah, and, and an easement would allow them to pave a driveway essentially over, over our property there.
Well, I don't know if they're going to make a driveway over our property. That's not the plan. They already have a driveway permit, correct?
That was, that was for one of the adjoining properties.
Yeah, so this is, they, they need to take the route that we own, right? I mean, this.
They, they will.
Otherwise they're landlocked.
They are landlocked, so they, they need access, they need access over our property, so they're going to. Uh, they need an easement and. In my opinion.
Right now they don't have the legal access.
Yes, right.
How many acres does that? I'm just curious.
Do we, do we need a motion?
It's a quarter of a quarter, so it's, it's pretty big.
So the way this will work is that if we.
Yeah.
If the board is in favor of granting an easement, then, uh, my. I would like, uh, to then direct. Staff to work with our legal counsel to prepare an easement agreement that. Details their obligations and responsibilities to.
Precisely, for example, if they. If the township allowed development of that forty, because forty acres is quite a bit, then clearly. The easement they'd have to have would have to conform to our road standards if they're gonna build more than one house, for example. It'd have to be a road. So.
So I think the best option is to, if the board is in favor of granting these, the easement. Then we can direct staff to work with our legal counsel to prepare a easement agreement. The only question I have for this board is usually there is a monetary amount associated with this type of an easement. There are two options, either a nominal amount, which is typically a dollar, or you, or there's actually. A dollar amount because there is value. To this easement that we are granting, so what is the board's?
What, do we have a policy on this certain?
I am not aware of a policy that pertains to.
Well, the, the, so. We're looking at two different, two, number one, they're landlocked. And they are connected by a, something we own.
Mm-hmm.
We have an obligation to provide access to them. So. A dollar. I mean, you know, something to, to nail it down, but honestly, it, we, we. Are kind of obligated to provide them access. It, it is, it's fairly simple.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, 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 there is, they have to have access. The only point I will, uh, make is that. They, they bought the property with a deed that specifically contained the language that says there is no access, so. They purchased the property knowing fully well that no access is being granted, so. It wasn't like they got the property then realized.
They definitely bought the property, but the language said it takes your chances.
Right, exactly. And I'm not suggesting one way or the other that that necessarily means that we don't, that we charge them. I'm just saying that. They purchased the property.
Whether, yeah, whether we, yeah, whether we do it, but whether we do it for a dollar or ten thousand dollars, it doesn't make, you know, it, it doesn't. Do anybody any other, any more justice other than. I mean. It, it doesn't make any sense to even entertain this thing. Does our, does our granting the easement affect the? Negatively affect the other property owners in any way?
I don't, I don't believe so. And, and I would also say that there is a public policy against. Landlocked parcels. I mean, so. Typically, as a, as a public policy matter, we don't favor landlocked parcels, so.
I mean, when they looked at that property and they bought that, did they, did they happen to see that the Grand Chalmers County Road Commission owned up to that? And maybe they had certain expectations that, you know, I mean. Yeah, somebody could say, well, it's landlocked. Well, is it really truly?
Well, and where else would they get their?
If we did grant them an easement, could a neighbor and property owner grant them an easement?
Sure. Yeah, from where? I don't know, but.
Well, from the left, lower side of the cul-de-sac as we're looking from it, for example.
Oh, I see, from those, yeah. I mean, an easement could be granted from by any property on their shore. I think this is the most straightforward. And keep in mind, uh, that we did grant them a driveway permit. So, and that was subject to certain conditions, uh, and that is in that packet as well.
So, so. We've. We've given a driveway permit. So.
Twelve foot wide drive, agricultural.
Okay, so what they're asking for is an easement so they can develop.
They wanna make it legal, basically, have an illegal access to property. We grant them the driveway permit back.
Well, they, they want. They want to develop it.
They want to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not just a dri- I mean, yeah, it's like, okay, yeah, if you, you have a, you have a house and you wanna have a forty acre estate and all that stuff, uh, that's great, but. Now, that's not what they want. They wanna develop. They wanna be able to, to condo out in, in the middle of all that, which. More power tool, um, but they want the easement so that they can, and yeah, if we work with, and, and it's. So the easement, um.
Uh, what is the, where was the? This supposed agricultural driveway was going to be located? Is that the south of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so I think it's right with a boulder, it is.
Yeah, okay, so, so we granted them the driveway permit. Doesn't that in and of itself? Create a right to travel upon our property?
Not a, well, I guess it could be, but it's not a true legal access, I guess. I don't know, I'll refer to you on that matter, but. Is it convertible, the question, I guess? Is it convertible to?
Well, it is one of the agricultural driveway, which I don't know what agricultural driveway mean other than the two-track, right? I mean, that's probably what I'm thinking. That the term agricultural.
But they might like to put the road.
That's what I'm thinking. They probably want to put a.
To serve the forty acres.
I, I don't have, I, I don't have, uh, uh, an opinion one way or the other as to. The cost, uh, I just wanted to make sure that that was brought to the board's attention. Uh, that could also be something that we could. Seek, uh, our legal counsel's advice, but I think that usually is a discretion with the board, not a legal advice issue.
I, I think what we need to do is to make sure that we have. A proper easement, so, so that they can do what they need to do. Or what they want to do, and I have no problem with that. We're here to work for them. We're not here to work against anybody.
To develop that, but that's kind of, they're responsible for the road.
Yeah.
My, my, yeah, my. The other, my suggestion also would be that if we charge them a dollar, then. Obviously, that is fair considering that I would expect that our easement agreement would require them to pay. To pay all costs and expenses related to the development, absolute maintenance and repairs. So in return, I think it's a fair deal to give them a dollar.
And I, and I think that we, we specify, we're very specific that our maintenance goes as far as that cul-de-sac, period.
So can I entertain a motion, uh, to that effect?
Oh, we word this.
Uh, well, I'm looking for a motion that would direct staff to work with our legal counsel to develop an easement agreement. Uh, the cost would be a nominal cost of one dollar and, and then to your point. Uh, we can also make sure that all maintenance, our maintenance responsibilities would end as a cul-de-sac. That would be the motion if I.
Did you get that?
I didn't get it.
Okay, so, so I'll make the motion that we direct staff to, to craft. An easement agreement that protects our, the road commission interests.
Right. For a dollar?
For, yeah, for consideration of a dollar.
Consideration of a dollar.
Let's. Just. Think about this just a second longer. If they were coming to us because they already had a plan. And it was to put. To develop a number of houses or commercial buildings on there, we would have a fee. Based on, we would, based on the size and what the intended use for. It might be. We approved our new fee schedule. It might be as much as, what, a thousand dollars for? Commercial development or more? So at that point, we would want to, for them, for us to agree to do this, we would want. What the permit said for the use.
But right now, we only granting an easement. It wouldn't they require another permit to? Develop a driveway beyond an agricultural.
I thought you called it, weren't that easement? I mean, if they wanna something more substantial than that two-track, then.
Right, exactly.
They need to.
Yeah, they will have to come back and.
Work with council to craft it that protects our interests.
Cause this is just an easement. If they wanna come back and, for example, pay.
Little commercial driveway, which is one.
They will have to come back and get a different permit for it because under the current permit, they're only allowed a twelve foot wide. Agricultural drive.
It's a sixteen feet, single family residential driveway directly.
Yeah, so they'll have to come separately to develop that driveway.
Yeah, they can't just convert.
They can't just convert it because of the easement. Okay. That would be made clear in the easement agreement that they would have to.
And because even if they put a development there, it's still a, it's still a commercial drive.
Yes. That they would have to still be required to. Obtain the necessary permits. To develop. Uh, a.
What's our driveway?
Forty acres, man.
What's our driveway for a single family?
Oh, I don't know, seventy-five acres, yeah, fifty, seventy-five dollars, it's not much.
Well, under this two thousand and. Fourteen memorandum that they had. Under, they had, they said that the, the only planned use of the parcel is fortress. I guess that changed.
Yep, yeah.
So it's a driveway, it shouldn't be. The same as if I changed my driveway.
So we have a motion, uh, uh, is there a second to Commissioner Gilman's motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll second it, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Gilman, a second by Commissioner Lehman. Directing staff to work with legal counsel to develop an easement agreement that protects the interest of the road commission. For a nominal, for a consideration of one dollar.
Don't you think they should pay our costs if they're asking us to do this?
What costs?
The cost to, to, to go to our legal counsel and.
Can add that to?
I didn't mean my motion.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that, you're. I, I.
To include the, the.
Actual costs.
The actual costs of directing it, yeah.
Okay. So we have an amended motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Costs incurred plus one dollar or is costs incurred?
No, one dollar is the consideration and then costs incurred, all the expenses incurred in draft.
I still think that if it's a driveway. Anybody else builds a house, they gotta pay the seventy-five bucks.
Well, we.
To hook onto our road.
I. I think we just had that discussion that they are, the, the easement agreement will require them to come separately and apply for a driveway permit.
It's gonna be more than one house, they have to get.
That, that. Now there was some. So I think staff is, uh, yeah, I think the staff, we told staff that we have to make sure that the easement agreement states that they will be required. To apply and obtain a driveway permit.
For the use of.
For the use of. Yeah, yeah. Same, no, not that's.
Or whatever, or whatever, or whatever, or whatever the use is.
I don't know if it's single family or commercial, but whatever they use it, they have to apply for it.
And for us to go, the staff to go through this. And for us to go to the council, should be an opinion for a single family, any other use or something. Specially, yeah.
Is that? Your understanding?
Yeah, I mean, I think the fee should be.
I don't know what the fee is.
They're gonna come, yeah, the fee's gonna be whatever it is when they.
Yeah.
If they develop it, they're gonna be. But the fee for us to give them the grant, this is gonna be, this, we're, we're. We've already given them, we're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna spend more time on this. By the hour. Derek is gonna spend some more time on it by the hour. Then when that, and Kylie's gonna. They're all gonna draft this together. It's gonna be hours to do this.
And Bill Hen's gonna spend.
And then we're gonna send it to Bill Hen, and he's gonna spend some time. This is gonna be a grand or more. And they, they should know that going in.
Well, they, they can then, they can, they, they, I'm sure once we have received the easement agreement with all those provisions, they will have their attorney most likely review it. And then it would be, eh. Then it will be up to them whether they wish to accept the easement agreement as projected or not.
And we will have done all this work if they decide now we're not gonna do that.
We have to do this work because otherwise we, there's no way to move forward. We have to direct staff to prepare it. I mean, you can. That's, I, I guess one option is to let the staff, uh, allow the staff to communicate these conditions.
That isn't.
Prior, yeah, prior to drafting the agreement and said, this is, these are the con- uh, conditions that will be in the easement agreement. Before we have our attorney prepare it. Do you agree with that? Would that be a better, okay?
I, I, normally when people come to us. They, they pay a fee. We, we won't send a man, we won't send a permit agent out. Usually just to gander around and look at the stuff. They pay our fee. We don't analyze a commercial project until they've paid our fee.
Right, and. They will, once they develop that. Once they apply for a driveway permit, they will pay that fee. For now, we're, you're asking whether. In, before we expend all these costs and expenses to develop an easement agreement. Whether staff should communicate some of these conditions to the. Developer before.
And maybe ask for a deposit.
No, well, no, you don't like that, I know, but just let's not get it counted.
I mean, there is a motion pending, so we, we, we have to have.
Yeah, I, I think, I think. They can handle the communication issue without, without any more direction. I, I, I don't think that's unreasonable.
We can always vote it down and make a motion, but we have a motion that, uh, that requires, uh, it was an amended motion.
It was an amended motion.
I don't know what the amendment was. Oh, cost of the. There's so much inspection that I, I've lost track of what that's, the, the cost of the.
I, yeah, what I've occurred, what, what I'm suggesting in this discussion is. We just throw this into one of the categories of our fees and that's what we charge. Okay, that's, that's what I, as opposed to this open end thing, so they won't know either. If somebody was gonna propose this development to us, we would ask for the, we would say this is gonna be.
It, it, but we don't know that there's a development necessarily.
Yeah, we, they just want an easement right now. They're not, we don't know whether it's gonna be a house there, whether there's gonna be condos there.
I mean, I get what you're saying, cause I mean, they could just say, hey, I just wanna apply for a commercial driveway.
But generally speaking.
They're not going across our property to get to the road. So, so, so we're actually even do, so we're actually even doing more work on this than normally they.
Generally, you own that to the, where you wanna connect in, so you're paying the fee to connect in. Now you gotta go across our property to connect. And so there's two different things going on here.
They're already going to pay for everything that is related to the development of. That driveway that is on our property. And then once it gets on their property. I mean, I understand what you're saying. Uh, that they should know what these costs are going to be, uh, beforehand. I don't know whether that, I mean, I. I don't know whether there is a way to estimate what our legal costs are going to be unless we get into. The drafting of these, but what I can, what we can require staff to do is to communicate. The drafting of these, but what I can, what we can require staff to do is to communicate these conditions to the, to the requester beforehand. And if they say no, then we don't even have to go through the exercise of drafting these.
Great.
We talked and we can estimate, say we're estimating around a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, talk to, I guess, ask Bill. You don't wanna give them a thousand dollars and then it becomes ten thousand dollars, but I think you can let them know. That these are the conditions, they are going to require, be required to pay all our costs and expenses incurred with drafting the easement agreement. They're gonna be responsible for all the maintenance development, that they are going to have to. Apply for a driveway permit and pay all fees associated with that, and see what they say. And if they say yes, then obtain that in writing, their commitment to it, and then get to, to drafting the easement. Does that sound like a fair?
That sounds great, great.
Okay, I don't think we need to put all that in a motion, I think the minutes, I, I, I think, I think the minutes would accurately reflect that. So we have a motion, uh, I, we, does anyone need to, that motion to be read, or is everyone aware of what they're voting for? Okay, the motion is, uh, to direct staff to. Develop a, to work with legal counsel to prepare an easement agreement for the consideration of one dollar. And to also for payment of all our fees and expenses incurred in drafting the easement agreement. Did I, and, and to work in the, which will be in the best interest of the road commission. That's the motion, Commissioner Gilman supported, uh, made the motion, Commissioner Lehman supported it. Let's do a roll call vote.
Corn, absent and excused, Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Thank you, board. Uh, Dan and, yeah, there should be several votes. Moving on to item L, uh, this is the South Long Lake Road and West Long Lake Road intersection. Contract modification, Derek.
So again, I know Delmer says directed for the last meeting, and. They had undergone some costs that they ate as well on this, and there wasn't any room for negotiations.
Okay.
We, we, we got the work done, we messed up when we first, uh. Prepared this, it is on us, we're gonna pay this.
Okay, you, you said so. Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion, we amend the, uh, the, the contractor, you know, approve the modification of the contract. At the amount of three hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents, I'll second it.
Okay, motion for Commissioner Gilman to support Commissioner Underwood to approve the modification to the contract. Two, four, E, three, one, zero, in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yeah.
Corn, which absent and excused, and Kevin?
Yes. Motion happens. Item M, Village of Five Lake Agreement. Larry?
Okay. Uh, this is basically a, uh, agreement, uh, Five Lake kinda came to us looking for, or five, the village of Five Lake came to us looking for some assistance. We put together some numbers for them, they agreed upon the numbers, now this is just basically a, uh, agreement between the two organizations or the, uh, municipalities. Saying that, uh, they will reimburse, reimburse us with true costs or exact costs. For us to provide them with some pathfinding, and then also salt and scent for whatever. Treat and operations.
And the pathfinding will be upon all the village roads, correct?
Okay, we already did it.
We already have done it, yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for the village of that, and I'll support it.
Okay.
So look, the reason we're good is that we both plan for holding, yeah, we did it on the exact, the last possible day we could.
Yeah, so there's a motion, Commissioner Underwood, support by Commissioner Lehman to approve the agreement with the village of Five Lake. And authorize the chair and clerk to execute the agreement, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry.
And Larry, they already approved the payment.
Yeah. Item M, N is the security.
This is an ongoing thing with the village of Five Lake, it wasn't just for this one, okay, right, we're gonna do this.
Right, yeah.
So we have a governmental agreement, they'll reimburse actual costs, right? Rather than they trying to ramp up their own.
You know. Well, and I hear that they have equipment challenges and, so this, this should help them out.
Good, I, they were concerned about something happened to the truck, and I said, we'll have to figure it out, but we'll not leave you in a lurch. That's how I put it.
So with this agreement, I only have one truck, it's kind of old, if there was a breakdown, keep coming, blow the village real quick and then charge them whatever it costs for it. Could get them through as well, truck was repaired.
All right, sounds like a good deal, thank you, everyone, um, item N, security camera bid award, Larry.
So this is, we have four, uh, request for proposal, we received fourteen bids from, uh, different vendor, the different vendors. We had walkthroughs, everybody had to do a mandatory walkthrough, uh, we got our prices back. Uh, Anavon Technology Group, uh, was the low, uh, going through their proposal, they do need specs. Uh, for what we want, and what we need for both locations, the Traverse City or this location, the trailer, and also the Kingsley New Build. Um, location, so, both, uh, campuses will be. Will have cameras installed. By, well, this is what I'm recommending.
Okay. Hey, have any questions for Mary?
The only question I have is the, uh, the off-site recording, uh, cloud. Yearly plan, I mean, it's not that much money they're asking, they really aren't asking that much, but, however. What, I mean, what do we have for a backbone that can support that, I mean, do you, do you understand where, the amount of data we're talking about?
So the, in the RFP, we put in, uh, ninety days retention. And, uh, to do that, it's a mix of being on site and then also in the cloud. After looking at it, it's one of those things where it's, this is an optional thing, we don't have to do this. We can do in-house for up to thirty days, and we could do that on a, basically a server in case.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, me personally, we had, we don't have anything at these locations, so right now, we're trying to make sure that we get at least thirty days.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Happens, it's usually, hey, something happened last week or something.
Right, right, um, yeah, I mean, I'm just. I just don't see the practicality of, of using the, uh, you know. Four thousand dollars a year worth of, of off-site storage, I don't see the practicality in terms of. You know, when you're, when you're backing up, what are you backing up? Um, I mean, you know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to specifically back up maybe a couple of cameras. Um, that have an oversight perhaps, but when you're talking the, uh, entire operation. You, you, we just don't have that bandwidth, you can have, uh, a nice fiber line and everything, plug it up with, with security camera traffic too.
Right.
Um, it does, not like it's decoding over, so I mean, it's, it, you know, it, it streams like TVs now, I mean, that's how this stuff works.
Yeah.
Uh, but at the same time. You're not. Um, yeah, I, I just, it, I just don't think that practicality, I think we'd be better served by putting another raid array. Um, in the basement or, or, you know, wherever we have the equipment at.
Yeah.
And dropping a several twenty terabyte drives in it.
Right.
I mean, just, to me, it'd be cheaper doing that i- in, in the end, and you could spend, um. Ten thousand dollars on a really good array and have it pay off in, in three years.
Right, yeah, I am definitely not, um, disagreeing.
Yeah.
Um, the, what was, what was given to us, and I looked at it, I, I kind of, I'm, I'm on the fence really on this one. Just because of that cloud storage for ninety days, I just don't, I think it might be overkill.
Yeah, yeah, and it depends also on how you set it up, I mean, look, if we're doing motion and what have you, um. You can get a lot, a lot of days from even a very large system right now with the types of recording H dot two sixty-five and what have you, but. For the board, for, for my purposes, I mean, I've looked at this, uh, I think, I'm glad that they came in where they came in. I'm happy with the bid, and I think we're, uh, we, we could be pretty confident with, with, uh, the way that it's gonna be set up.
Uh, with the cloud storage, uh. If, it, it's per year, so if within the, in, in the next year, we get the. Ability of the necessary servers and, and hard drives that we can store that amount of data. Uh, at the new facility, because I think I heard you say that the reason you considered this is because that, those servers are not there yet. Correct?
Or, or, yeah, there's nothing there.
There's nothing there yet.
Yeah.
So we don't, if we get that and have that set up in twenty twenty-five, we don't have to.
But just, just understand, understand that recording is on the machine primarily, and. I mean, th- they're not putting just empty machines and just not putting servers there, they're putting servers there with storage choices in them. And, and frankly, you could, you could put a hundred, hundred and sixty terabytes in most machines right now without, uh, any issue. And a hundred and sixty terabytes is a god awful amount of, of days of storage, so.
But the cloud storage, and I'm not an IT specialist by any stretch of that word. But doesn't cloud storage mean that we don't have to have that hard equipment?
That's correct.
Right, it does away with that, so we have to purchase that hard equipment.
No, this includes the hard equipment for.
This, so yes, there's, there's still a little, there's a recording box that happens, basically, and, and that. Recording box can hold up to thirty days right now.
Okay.
What this is saying, for cloud storage, he's saying, we can, we can do sixty to, and to ninety days of video storage. So that's what you get.
Yeah.
Well, what it would.
And, and it protects if there's damage, if for, God forbid, there's a fire or something like that, that we have that data backed up. So there is some, uh, uh, some degree of protection.
And there is, you know, there's a big debate right now, cloud or on, on-site type, on-premise.
What is the, not that it matters that much in our particular situation.
But, uh, are, are you satisfied with the security, uh, measures with the cloud storage versus like on-premises? Then that's kind of where I was going with that, so when the county went through their, their, uh, breach. Uh, all the cloud-based software and programs were totally fine, were, were completely protected. The things that were, um, in a box in the basement type thing, and the servers and, and the hardware, that is the stuff that they had the most problems with. So there is, and again, this would be kind of a mix of fixes, but, um, it would be something or a mix of solutions. Um, and that's kind of why I left it in there, uh, but yeah, there is, there's definitely a higher risk with the, uh, servers and things that are hardware. Harder to regain or, or recapture after a breach.
I have one more question.
This is a, uh, the cloud is a one-year.
The cloud is, yes, you just, you would re-up that every year.
Okay, yeah. Unless you choose not.
So can I have, have a motion?
Sure, motion to purchase, follow the staff recommendation and purchase the equipment for Kingsley and Frayn.
Okay, with the cloud storage?
With the clouds, okay, that's like.
All right, we have a com- uh, motion by Commissioner Lehman, support by Commissioner Underwood to follow staff's recommendation. For the purchase of security cameras for Kingsley, the, the framing facilities and the cloud storage. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Uh, Corn, which is absent and excused, Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. That's it, thank you, Larry. Hey, you, item O, you all have the holiday board meeting scheduled for, for, when it's by our organizational meeting. It's kind of late in the year, I thought, January twenty-third.
Yeah.
Is that always that late?
Sometimes, okay. The first year I was, Joe and I were here, they had a special meeting, began to.
That's what I thought so too, I thought I, when, when I came, the first full year I had in twenty twenty-three, we had a regular meeting. Um, is there a preference? I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it just seems a little late to.
Yeah, typically it's been, the organizational meetings been right before the first regular board meeting, but if you.
An hour before, right?
Then you did a special meeting, probably something like this, and like, well, we gotta get our org done before we do the special meeting, or.
Wondering if they moved it ahead when there's a new person coming.
Like if something was changing.
That may, that may have been the.
So, yeah, and, and, anyway.
Odd number of years, yeah. Potentially.
It doesn't matter to me, I, I, like I said, it, it's not a big issue for me, so, uh, we can leave it as is.
And then I just kind of copied like what we did last year was like every other month with a special meeting and.
Uh, yeah, and those special meetings, as we did this year, we, we, those are dependent upon if we have any business that needs a special.
Kind of knows some things by that, too.
So, any other questions regarding this schedule? Do, do we adopt it formally?
You don't have to at this point, I just kind of wanted anybody to, like, bring up your concerns, I mean, if you know something, let me know, but I will. Probably next meeting or the special meeting, just say, hey, this is kind of what we're gonna finalize.
Well, I mean.
Something that, I mean, you can finalize it now too, if you're very good with it, or, um.
How are we doing on the six P M? Yeah, um, when we first started with seven, and we said we don't mind six, does it work out good with the, for the staff and the public to do it at six?
I think I.
That's definitely better.
I think it's def- uh, it's definitely better, we sometimes have gotten out at nine o'clock here, I, I don't wanna. Do you wanna go there? Can, yeah, you know, I mean, I mean, we're technically supposed to stop at ten.
Yeah.
I think, but.
Part of the time we had, people who had talking marathons.
Yeah, that is still a possibility of something, so, again, it still happens. So I, I, I think six works for staff, especially at wintertime, you know, they get to, some of, some of them have to travel, uh, so.
Do you wanna wait till next month to?
I don't know if we need all five votes, un- unless you.
I think we should, cause we are missing one, of course, right, with my personal opinion.
Okay, we can do it on December twelfth, there's no hurry, all right? Okay. Informational items, number eight, A, managers' comments.
Um, just wanna talk a little bit, we are planning to have a special meeting on December nineteenth.
Yes.
Okay, and then we talked about doing our ribbon cutting before handout in Kingsley, so.
On the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, do ribbon cutting from four to six, six o'clock to our regular board meeting. The new Kingsley building.
In Kingsley, yeah.
And we, we, Kylie will send out and Google it to all of us, so that we can get that on our calendars, so that there's no confusion. There.
Uh, time the ribbon cutting, we also wanted to name the road going down into the private road, and we wanted to name it after, uh, Bill Mauser. First time shirt on the board and a big push behind, uh, doing the Kingsley building and, you know, up in the beginning phases of it. Okay, so, kind of wanted to nominate that both times. Reach out to the family and.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, say that please reach out to the Mauser family and, and let them know.
Um, recently here, it sounds like Charles is, uh, D T's here, they wanna speak on this a little bit. Uh, the seventy-two, twenty-two roundabout that's going in, they have to move, uh, several utilities. And it's like they're gonna start with gas, and that's gonna shut down seventy-two. Uh, so we detouring traffic down Gray Road.
Shut down seventy-two.
Seventy-two coming into. Coming into twenty-two on the hill, uh, that pushes traffic back up to Gray Road, so it's, it's gonna be fun for a few days. We just recently found out about this, uh, Leavon County actually just off to it. So they're looking at doing, I think it has to be by March, it has to be done, but my understanding, Derek, we're looking at.
Looking to start as soon as possible. So no traffic would be able to go through that seventy-two and M twenty-two intersection for how long? You've been very patient waiting here, please introduce, date your name and let us know when you, for the record, who you are and.
Chris Hackworth, uh, sixty-five, seventy-two Center Road, um, I'm the original manager for D T for Northern Michigan. Uh, do all of our community work and our government relationship work, so, it damaged, and we, we have been approached by M dot. Months ago, obviously, as all of you have as well, in terms of this project, uh. When M dot decided to advance this project into twenty twenty-five versus.
When M dot decided to advance this project into twenty twenty-five versus its original plan of twenty-six. We were all starting to scramble, the, you're very familiar with that choke point of the intersection, uh. D T has three gas mains through there. The city has a sewer force main, storm water and water. T C L P has their main line through there, Consumers has a three-phase through there. Michigan broadband has a line in there, Charter has a line in there, and E T T has two, two uh. Uh, chambers in there as well, so we are all. In this intersection, uh, a number of us are underground, anybody that's above ground has to get out of the way, because all area is being asked to be brought down. Um, and we've been told that we have to get out of the way by market. So, uh, our folks have been working with M dot to try and figure out where we can go. Uh, because it is so congested and there's certain things that can't move, uh, and we're not gonna. I can be able to touch some of the storm water, some of those storm drains are very large, things like that, as we, there's been one corridor that's been. Been worked out, that it would essentially run from the northwest corner of the intersection, back at a diagonal of the Bay Street. Uh. We, we have been approached, we have. We've actually talked with all the other utilities about doing a joint trench. Uh, as many of us as can go in there as possible, Consumers does not need to go underground, they're going a different route around. Uh, T C L P has agreed to go in with us, uh, we will have two mains that will be in there, the other one luckily is deep enough. It's a four hundred pound gas main, we don't want to touch it, so that one actually, we don't have to to deal with, but the hundred and fifty and the sixty pound, I think were the two we talked about. Uh, and then Trac City Light and Power will have their conduit through there as well, we're waiting to hear from Charter. And what they're gonna do, but it will require us to open trench. Go down seven to nine feet depending on how we need to get down.
I'm curious, and this is just a, you know, random thought, just trying to think of if 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 money were no object. And you could. Literally build. A tunnel there instead and then plant your uh your equipment through after the fact, I mean, eh. Do you understand, I mean, you say lay a trench, but lay a trench where? All the utilities then could work from one end or the other or to one end of the other, even while traffic is blowing and what have you when it's all said and done. Um, has that ever been done anywhere? Is that something, I mean, I, clearly it has been done, I mean, New York City has has underground U T utilities.
So I think in this instance, a lot of it is, a lot of it is timing, the engineering that's involved. Um, the, what is the type of equipment, you know, how how easy is it to move? Uh, so there's a lot of those considerations and we're all dealing with a very good question, right? So, uh, you know, like I said, at this point. We are working, Elmer's has come in and and has quoted us on the excavation. They don't feel that it is safe to do it in phases that it would, you need to, you need to close it down, so we're closing down. Twenty-two will be, nothing will impact twenty-two at all.
Okay.
It will just be the seventy-two and Bay Street. It will be roughly three to four weeks.
That's right, yeah, the north west corner, that's right, I I.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, it'll be three to four weeks uh by the time, because. We have steel in there, and that steel has to be, I mean, we've got a few, we were having some conversations when we met this past week. Uh, you know, depending on where some of the other mains are, we might have to do uh. At forty-five degree angles with the steel, welds, X-rays, pressure testing. Uh, gas is nothing we want to have.
Water and sewer down there and everything is all the same.
Yes, and I believe what uh we were told is. Yeah, they're gonna have to do bypass pumps in two different places for the sewer and and the water, I believe. So.
So the storm and sewer.
And water, and water.
Yeah, it is, it it's it's congested and.
Yes, I I gotta switch when they start.
So Chris, twenty-two will be. Straight shot.
Twenty-two will be straight shot.
Of going up the hill, you're anticipating. Front street, just eager run.
Right, correct. See, run great, now, again, we had a very good conversation with both, both agencies uh about what. What we want to be looking for in detour, we brought in a draft from Elmer's and give them a break safety in terms of detour plans. Great feedback uh was provided by both road agencies, so we've sent that back to Elmer's to be reincorporated. We're also talking with the city, we have a meeting next week with M dot to kind of finalize all this, the plan would be. As soon as we get the city sign off, work with with. Uh, your folks, work with Lebanon, get the permits and have the detour routes approved. We would look to be starting, you know, potentially middle of December.
Oh, wait. Wow, okay.
Whoa, and all of the somebody to traffic will be running down Gray Road.
Cedar Run.
Yes.
Well, it's.
Boogai to Hoxie. Boogai to Hoxie to Lincoln to. Cedar Ben, Cedar, not Cedar, uh, Cherry Ben. Cedar Run, Cherry Ben, yes. So, yeah, it's not.
So, traffic coming from Lebanon will be able to go straight through on uh on Grand View Parkway, right?
Correct.
So it's the traffic coming pretty much down seventy-two.
Yeah.
That will have to go through Gray Road or one of the other night or up or up.
And see, but, and I'd learn real fast if I was coming in from Cedar, I'd take it straight road or or, you know, and then hit it in and. Getting more inland before the traffic starts.
What's that other one, uh?
Goodrich.
Good, yeah, Goodrich with the traffic right there.
Sure, yeah. And we are discussing a very aggressive communication plan, especially with the residents in that. Yeah, I mean, we've got a couple of neighborhoods on the north and the south side, Morgan Farms, doing a lot of, a lot of communication, direct communication to those folks about what's gonna be happening.
Yeah, yeah, no, and and hopefully, um. With the township supervisors and 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 the township boards as well, uh, has there been, uh, to your knowledge? A meeting scheduled with the local officials to discuss this plan?
We haven't even finalized the plan yet, so. Like I said, we, we, we had our meeting last week, we are meeting, uh, our plans meet with the city next week. The city is aware of it, it knows about, we haven't come in and said, okay, here's the final, here's what we're thinking, uh, here's the timing. So that's still in flux, it could be, we could be waiting until after the first of the year, because we're we're kind of in. Does, you know, we have to use a steel crew from Miller Pipeline, um, you know, Trac City Light and Power, do they have the equipment they need, do they have the the supplies they need? We have the steel order, but we have have crew. That crew is currently finishing the work, you may have seen the really cool candle flame that was on uh Parsons uh. Yesterday, uh, twenty foot high, uh, so.
That's always fun.
That crew was, is finishing up that project on Parsons and V Stains.
The the my thought is that I I, before you finalize a plan, maybe it makes sense for uh you guys to sit down with. Long Lake Township and Garfield Township and 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 then, and also with the Grand Traverse County Emergency Coordinator. And and some of EMS and fire, before you finalize the plan, because they may have some input that might be valuable to you, so I I. In my opinion, I don't think you should wait until finalizing the plan, because then you're simply communicating to them that this is the plan. Uh, rather than seeking their input and they probably may would have some. Uh, valuable input to provide.
Absolutely, no, I, I mean, I think the the other side is. We don't have a choice.
Right, I understand that, we're, I understand that.
Speaking of Parsons, was there some rework that had to be done down there? It seems to me that the crews had to go back and. Dig up a little a couple of times.
So, um, so there is an excavation pool there, that's our time, that has to stay open until January line, so we have to. Right now, we're in the process of pickling that line, which is carrying that steel pipe.
Sure.
So the marcaptain, as we are over odorizing the pipe, it will sit for a week. And then what will come in next Monday.
From convincing and then.
Right, we will let the steel absorb uh absorb that marcaptain.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we'll come in and burn it off, once that's done and we've tested and pressure tested everything, we've got the order levels the right. Then we will abandon the other line and we will put this new line into service and then all that excavation will come back in. And we've got some hard surfacing that we'll be doing in the spring once the asphalt plans open back up.
Appreciate you indulging my curiosity, I think. So, M dot told, told us, told the community that there there was not a detour around this.
And and this is, this is probably, I I I bet you anything that they are probably gonna say this is not our detour. This is their detour.
Correct, that's what they're saying.
That's what they're gonna say.
Yep.
Had this been their detour, we would have said, you're putting some traffic on our road, right, I want you to reinforce the roads and we want.
Yes.
All season.
Yes.
So we want them to be all-season roads, so are you prepared to make our roads all pink roads?
We have no ability. We are, however, working with. With our team to figure out temporary stabilization and.
And as much. I appreciate the uh uh trying, absolutely.
What do you mean, they?
They're putting traffic on a road.
I agree with you.
It's not along on a road.
Yeah.
I get, I.
Yeah, well, the only good thing is we're gonna know exactly what's gonna happen next summer.
Well, what we could do is we could encourage them to uh to put signs up that truck traffic goes up. Uh, six thirty-three and then.
And that was.
And and then Grandview or something, right?
Right, we were, we're gonna all definitely have their side, they're gonna bring trucks down the Cherry Ben piece.
The Cherry Ben, yeah.
We wanna, we wanna use Gray Road.
Gray, right, right.
For ours.
This is six, what is it? This is not six thirty, uh, six, six, yeah, even.
Yeah, 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 the guy, yeah.
Yeah, Boogai, it's Boogai Road, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
And I'm available for anything.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
So local, we're not gonna sample the traffic.
Well, traffic will go on its own. At least Goodrick has, you know, that traffic, there's a easier to left turn than off Gray Road.
Now, now, Good, Goodrick is, right, Goodrick is a local, have we looked into that, what we're gonna do with that? Eventually, given that it's right across from the the Cedar, the Cedar Road.
I would like to see eventually.
It'd be primary, tilting to. Till, yeah, replace, right, switch from Tilton to that, I think that'd be appropriate. Anyway. Another, another.
Alright, any other comments? Okay, thanks. Commissioner comments, questions and future agenda items.
Dan and I. Who else? You'll be the Ron Jolly one. At nine o'clock, correct?
Yeah, great, well, that one.
You wanna say hi to Jamie Callahan, the incoming county treasurer, who's sitting back at the corner here. Let's first start.
Okay. Commissioner Gilman.
Well, now I know what I'm gonna be doing, waiting to the end of the Ron Jolly show for my, for my quick words of wisdom after hearing these guys.
Oh, you're gonna call in? Don't believe it, yeah.
Uh, I got nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Lehman. Nothing? Wow, okay, I just wanted to make one note, I I think, I don't know if any of of you have followed. Uh, the plan that's been put forward by Speaker-elect Hall uh regarding. Uh, diverting two point seven billion dollars annually towards the road funding, and he's proposing to do that, uh. In the lame duck session, I'm not sure how far that is gonna go, just because already all the. Public school official associations, they have like, apparently they have five, four or five of them. You know, for each official, they have their own associations, they have. Come out and express serious da- concerns about the money being diverted, because from them, his plan, I believe, is. To uh increase the gas tax, which directly goes toward the road. And he still thinks that this fuel tax and still be able to uh find funding is, is repeatedly assured. And and Senator and Representative Coons have already all come out and said that they are not planning on taking any money from the schools, so.
Well, he said, he said that he would vote against his own bill.
Right.
If if it threw a hole in the school budget.
So, I mean, the reason I bring them up, it bring that, brought that up is because. It was encouraging to see that some of the plans taking a position of uh power, soon to be position of power.
Yeah.
Is is actually floating a plan about it, so, other than that, I have no other other comments, uh, any public comment? Jamie, nothing to say?
Thanks. I mean, I mean, you you came here, you know.
I was gonna say something, then Joe introduced me, so I was like, well, no, but you can still say something. Um, Jamie Callahan, three zero three West Twelfth Street, uh, in Traverse City, um, just want to. Um, introduce myself to everyone, uh, making out, um, a good majority of you, a few I don't, um. But yes, uh, incoming county treasurer and uh look forward to working with you all and your staff. Um, as uh we get into the next new term and there's a lot of back and forth. Interactions between the Road Commission and Firdriff's office, so look forward to working with your team.
Alright, thank you, Jamie, thanks for being here. And congratulations on your election.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Washington, Georgia.
Sports on paper?
Oh, hi.
Congratulations, you're a great.